Good evening and welcome to the October 1st meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I don't see Reverend Roberts from Morningstar First Baptist Church. He was on the agenda for our invocation, and since I don't see him, I'll call on our Ward Four Councilman, Dr. Reverend Freeman, for our invocation. I'll ask that if you're able, to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we say thank you for the abundance of grace that you continue on bestowing upon all of our lives. We want to continue on saying thank you for the life that you bless us with. Father, we are also thankful and grateful of you being with our city during this time, God, realizing that many lives have been affected with devastation through this storm. And, God, we also pray for our brothers and sisters, cities next door to us, that you continue on providing help and support for them. And, Father, we pray that all that needs to be restored and repaired here in the city of Hickory, that you certainly lead us and guide us as city officials and as citizens. Father, we're so thankful for an opportunity for us to come together again for another meeting. We pray, God, that you will certainly continue on leading us and guiding us by your love and by your compassion. We ask this all in the only name that matters, Yahshua Hamashiah, Jesus the Anointed One. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have two special presentations this evening. The first one will be a proclamation to the Hickory Fire Department and their staff concerning Fire Prevention Week for October 6th through the 12th. So at this time, chiefs, if you will, please come up front, and I'll read this proclamation. I certainly want to take this time on behalf of the council as well to commend and thank all of our fire personnel. As everyone knows, they are, those in the police department and the fire department are probably some of our most visible coworkers. We've got many coworkers in the city, and I want to give this, take this opportunity not only to thank the fire department, but of all of our coworkers. Obviously, during this storm, everyone has had to step it up and had to do things that probably were out of the ordinary, and our staff, all of our coworkers, have certainly stepped up and done a terrific job, and we appreciate each and every one of them. But this is Fire Prevention Week, so, well, actually, it doesn't start until the 6th, I believe. But we don't meet again until after the 6th, so we are going to proclaim Fire Prevention Week in the city of Hickory this afternoon. It says, "Whereas three out of five deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or no working smoke alarms. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire almost in half." Are we getting an alarm as we speak? That's not a smoke alarm, that's a weather alert. Okay. "Whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each sleeping area and on every level of the home. Whereas residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. Whereas the city of Hickory and first responders are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and in visiting Hickory. And whereas Hickory residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You serves to remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. There now, therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the city of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all the people of Hickory to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to practice fire safety." So I'll give this to both of you gentlemen, and thank you once again for all that you do for our community. Now, for our second social presentation, I've got to make sure I get the right one because I've got two. One of them's in Spanish and one of them's in English, so I got to make sure I get the right one. So I would like to invite all of our friends and representatives of Central Latino Award for this next proclamation. And while they're coming up here, I'll wait till they all get up here, I think it would be appropriate, also, our own Yade Fox was recently recognized this past weekend by Central Latino as Latino of the Year Award, is that correct? Is that correct? And I apologize to Yade, I wasn't able to be there due to obvious things, that we had a lot going on, and I wanted to apologize publicly to her, but I did want to also recognize Yade for her accomplishment and for that award. Come up here and join her, Yade.
All right, Yade!
All right, and Hispanic Heritage is an entire month. The fire department, they got a week, so they get a month, okay? This is also a very special time. It says, "Proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month, September the 15th through October the 15th, 2024." It says, "Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month," and then it's got some, I can't pronounce the rest of that, so I'll just leave it alone. It says, "From September 15th to October 15th, by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the city of Hickory recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic city residents, Hispanic city employees, El Central Latino, and numerous grassroots leaders, outreach groups that help in increased cultural awareness, and provide education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become a more culturally diverse, inclusive, and welcoming city for everyone. And whereas the city of Hickory recognizes that Hispanics amount to an estimated total 12% of the city of Hickory population, of which the majority of these residents speak Spanish. And whereas the city of Hickory recognizes that Hispanics play a vital role in our economy and workforce, and have also contributed in making Hickory a great city to live in. Therefore, I Hank Guest, Mayor of the city of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, declare September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Hickory proclaimed this first day of October, 2024." And I'll give you both versions of that proclamation, and if you would like to add anything or say anything, we certainly will allow you an opportunity to be able to do that as well. You're welcome to stay if you would like, but also, we certainly understand if you need to leave the meeting this evening. All right, next on the agenda is item number five. Item number five is persons requesting to be heard. I just want to clarify that if you're here to speak on behalf of the Hickory Housing Authority and the public hearing that we are going to have, that's later in the meeting, and that's not what this is. This is, if someone here has something that they would like to address the council that's not related to the Hickory Housing Authority public hearing, then this would be the time to be able to do that. We just ask that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less, and that you approach the podium and state your name and your address. So at this time, I'll invite you, if you would like to address the council, to the podium, to be able to do that. Is there anyone present that would like to address the council this evening? There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to address the council. I'll just remind all of you that are present that our council remains available, and we're pretty easy to contact, so you don't necessarily have to wait till a council meeting to be able to voice your concerns. We make ourselves available, and you certainly can contact us at any time. All right, at this time, I'll ask if there's a motion or discussion related to the approval of a minutes from a regular meeting of September the 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Item number seven on our agenda is the reaffirmation and ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion or discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move to receive the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The consent agenda passes unanimously. We have three public hearings on the schedule for this evening. To introduce our first public hearing, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, members of the city council, Mr. Swanson. First public hearing is consideration of the preliminary assessment roll for curb and gutter petition 24-01 for property located at 525 Ninth Avenue Northwest, presented by Public Works Director Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mayor Guest, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. Before you did not have a curb and gutter petition, we've completed the work, it's just time to assess the owner for the cost of that. So the work was done at 525 Ninth Avenue Northwest for the improvements. The date of construction was July 19th, 2024. The date of completion was August 2nd, 2024. The total length was around 109 linear feet, driveway was 24 feet, and the total that will be billed to the property owner will be $5,108.50. There's some views of the property. You can see that they attached to the curb and gutter that was at the house that's downhill and then came up to the front. They were having some water issues going in their driveway. They have kind of a circular drive, so that helped to alleviate that water issue. This particular residence, I think they own the lot that's there beside of them. I tried to talk them into doing that lot too, but at this time, they're just doing the lot that they actually have a residence on. There's some more pictures just to see the quality of work that our street department did, and did a really good job, and it matched into their driveway really well. Their driveway, the concrete driveway was existing, and it was, it had a big hump in it where they were trying to keep the water out of it, but it turned out to be a real good project. So the request for council approval of resolution authorizing preparation of assessment rolls for street improvement petition 21-01 for curb and gutter located at 525 Ninth Avenue Northwest in the amount of $5,108.50.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, sir. All right, this is a, this will be a public hearing. In just a few minutes, I'll open the public hearing. As I stated, we do have three public hearings this evening, and the same rules apply to all of our public hearings. We will allow up to 15 minutes for anyone that would like to speak in opposition of a topic that's related to our public hearing, and we will also allow the same amount of time, five minutes, for anyone who would like to speak in favor. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. We do ask and ask that you consider that if you're going to speak, that you keep in mind repetition takes away from some of your time, so if someone has already spoke to the matter, perhaps you would want to consider addressing it in a different way or addressing it something entirely different, because as a group, it's not individuals that get 15 minutes each, it's as a group, you get 15 minutes in opposition, and as a group, you get 15 minutes in favor, and the same thing counts for rebuttal and surrebuttal. So once again, we ask that if you're going to speak, that you come to the podium and that you state your name and your address. This time is not a question and answer time, and it is not a debate. We listen to, that's why we call it a public hearing, we listen to what the public has to say, and then we'll take any action based on what we hear from the public hearings and the information that we have before us. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open in consideration of the preliminary assessment roll for the curb and gutter petition that you've just heard described by Mr. Miller, and I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of that There doesn't appear to be anyone that wants to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor. There doesn't appear to be anyone that would like to speak, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion or discussion from council.
Move approval of the resolution.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that petition carries unanimously. Once again, to introduce our second public hearing, I'll call upon our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. Second public hearing is consideration of closing an unnamed alley between First Street Southwest and Second Street Southwest as requested by RGS Property LLC. It will again be presented by Public Works Director Steve Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mayor Guest, members of council, Mr. Swanson, Mr. Wood. So now I have before you, like, as Mr. Wood described, a pretty simple unused alley off Second Street Southwest and Second Avenue Southwest, and coincidentally, between First Avenue and Second Avenue Southwest. Changer's not working. So the, so I'll go ahead and read it off and just give a description of where it, oh, there it goes. Thank you. So this, staff is going to, I mean, I'm getting off of my, there we go, sorry. So the, it's a single party, single party petition by RGS Property LLC. The unopened street is bounded on the north and south sides by property owned by the LLC. The request to council approval of a resolution order closing this portion of unopened street adjoining First Street and Second Street Southwest. This is the structure, so they own all four corners of this parcel, and this is an old alleyway, this is, it's not wide enough to do anything with if someone wanted to, and then this piece here is just kind of is for, it was maybe First Street at one time, but this looks like they could have been in the 30s or 40s whenever this was all developed. There used to be like a cap stand or something there, if some folks will remember. The part property to the north is the new apartment complex to every age, and so then to, this is the, I think it's Bella Rose, or it's a consignment store, and then, of course, this is the old Clark Tire building. So there's no need, there's no city utilities in here, there's nothing that we would ever need to have that property for. So staff requests approval of a resolution order closing this portion of unopened street adjoining First Street Southwest and Second Street Southwest.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you, sir.
It's Steve.
All right, once again, this is a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open in consideration of closing this unnamed alley between First Street and Second Street Southwest as described by Mr. Miller, and I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of this request. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion or discussion.
Move approval of the closing of the unnamed alley.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. All right, for our third and final public hearing this evening, I'll, I think our city manager is going to present, so I'll introduce it. It is consideration of a resolution to abolish the city of Hickory Public Housing Authority and transfer that to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and that will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. The first thing about this presentation and public hearing is that a public hearing is not required to do this if you were to choose to do it. It can have been done by resolution, but I know y'all, city council said they wanted to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in and have a period of comment for y'all to consider other items related to this before you make any decision, so that you're going one step beyond what is actually required. The other thing with, sometimes there's confusion when people talk about the Hickory Public Housing Authority, they think of what used to be Ridge Crest and Blue Ridge Heights and Terrace Hills and Sunny Valley. That part of public housing is not owned by public housing anymore. They don't have bricks and mortar units. They administer Section 8 housing vouchers. So those units that used to be public housing are now owned by a nonprofit called New Dimensions. So I know people still think that they own and operate, I think there is a management contract with the ownership of what used to be public housing, the bricks and mortar, is now with New Dimensions, it's been that way since 2017. So a lot of what we're going to talk about is going to be related to the Section 8 vouchers, which is the main mission of the Hickory Public Housing Authority today. And of course, Section 8 is a housing voucher program, is for low-income households, help them to be able to afford safe and decent housing in the private rental market. So the program issues an income, to income-qualified households, a voucher, and the PHA, the Public Housing Authority pays the landlord, the difference between what the tenant can pay and what the tenant can't pay. So just, you know, easy math, so if it's a thousand-dollar rent, the tenant can pay $200, the voucher covers the other $800, it goes to the private sector landlord where that certificate holder is living. And it's, and it's not just, these vouchers are not just for individuals, they're for families. So, so let's get into a little bit. So a lot of times when people, you know, we hear Hickory Public Schools, you know, people think city council operates and owns the Hickory Public Schools, there's a lot of the same, you know, thought that people think about the Hickory Public Housing, but that's not the case. Your relationship in terms of your, and this is true across the state, what I'm going to go, this is North Carolina general statutes, so we're very limited in our role related to public housing. So cities can create public housing authorities, and city council did back in the 60s, they created what today exists as the Hickory Public Housing Authority. You can abolish housing, the Hickory Public Housing Authority. You can, well, authorities are considered local governments, a local unit, so they fall under the same financial reporting requirements and everything else, just like a city was. So they, they're, that part of their operation is overseen by the state treasurer's office. So across the state, in situations like we have, where the city has appointed or created an authority, the mayor makes the board appointments. So Mayor Guest, and prior to you, Mayor Wright and Mayor McDonald, y'all make the appointments to the board. And you, the mayor may remove a housing authority board member for cause, and there's a process that's outlined in the statutes. When this housing authority was set up, you had to have a minimum of five board members on the housing authority board, there are nine. You have the authority, city council has the authority to expand it to 11. So there are a couple of other more minor things, but that is really the essence of the city's involvement with the Hickory Public Housing Authority. We don't administer their, well, I'll get into what it's not. So the Hickory Public Housing Authority operates as an independent governmental unit. So we've established it, but they operate independently of the city. So it's not a department of the city, it's its own governmental unit. We don't appoint, the city does not appoint its executive director, its personnel are not city employees, and this is true across the state. The city does not manage their funds. The, we don't fund the housing authority, their funding comes from HUD, the federal government. We don't direct housing authority operations, and they're subject to an annual audit, just like the city of Hickory is at the end of their fiscal year. So outside of the relationship with board appointments, the city and the Hickory Public Housing Authority operate as independent governmental units with our own independent missions. So that's, that's the structure here. So their mission, again, it changed in 2017, when what used to be known as the bricks and mortar of public housing, the ownership of that changed to New Dimensions. So the Hickory Public Housing Authority does not own any bricks and mortar units in their portfolio. All they do is administer the Section 8. However, New Dimensions does contract with the Hickory Public Housing Authority for management and maintenance services. So New Dimensions owns, and they have a contract for public housing to manage and maintain. So Hickory Public Housing Authority, as far as their, the core part of their mission is just limited to the housing vouchers through HUD. Even, let's see, yeah, so the, here's some, so let's, here's a little bit about performance, and we have another housing authority in Catawba County, and it's the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. I'm just, here's some comparative data. So the Hickory Public Housing Authority with those Section 8 vouchers that they have, they have 556 vouchers through HUD. So they're utilizing, they're able to place families within that 556 number, 340. So they're leaving about 216 on the table, so to speak. So those, and that's not 216 individuals, that's 216 potential families. So that's a utilization rate of what they've been allocated by HUD of 61.15%.
Can you state that again?
So it's a utilization rate of the 556 vouchers that they have from HUD, 61.15%, which leaves 216 potential families unserved by Section 8 vouchers that they have. Okay. So the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, they have, they're a regional housing authority. So they have the four county region, which includes Hickory. They have, they have a Section 8 program too, they have a 3, 1,386 vouchers. They're, the number they utilize in that number is 1,356, so that's almost a 98% utilization rate. So they've got 30 unutilized, and that, they say that's typically the churn between people moving out of Section 8 and others moving in. So you can see the difference in, in performance within the Section 8 housing voucher program just between those two entities. And of the 65 public housing authorities in the state of North Carolina that administer the housing vouchers of Section 8, the Hickory Public Housing Authority's percentage of 61.15% utilization of their vouchers ranks 60th lowest out of 65. Here's some trend data. This goes back, so right in here was when New Dimensions took what used to be the bricks and mortar of public housing, and then public housing switched just purely to the Section 8 voucher. You can see there's been a consistent trend of the percentage of leasing that I just showed you down to where we are today. So that's probably a, you know, six-year timetable there, and here's the nations, among the Section 8 vouchers, you can see it's been pretty consistent at about, or just a little less than 90% across the nation. So there's been a decline through the last six years. So there's been a decline through the last six years. So here's why we're, here is why this had come to a head, so to speak. So over the past year, you know, you've had people stand at the podium, we've gotten emails, we've got phone calls, we've got text messages about complaints related to the housing authority. Sometimes it related more to their management and maintenance of the bricks and mortar units that New Dimensions owns, but y'all, you asked, and the message was, well, now our relationship with the housing authority is the mayor appoints the board, and you know, that's, that's it, but it reached the point where, okay, what are some other options? So you asked the city attorney and I to look into all this, and that's, we did a number of public records requests to get a lot of this information. So you wanted to know what your options are, so that's why we're here tonight. And it's not my decision, it's your decision, you can do with it as you please. So since, since the housing authority manages those units for New Dimensions, an independent, you know, we kept saying, well, not much we can do, it's, you know, it's their own independent, you know, group and whatnot. So we started looking into some, okay, what's their performance like, and I just showed you some of it. HUD has an online voucher reporting system that requires housing authorities to report their leasing and housing voucher data monthly. That report, it's not my report, it's HUD's report, shows that the housing authority has not submitted any data forms that were required monthly in the last six months.
Can you state that again, please?
So they're required to submit monthly through a HUD portal their data on leasing, and they have not done that in the last six months, and that's current as of this afternoon. And the housing authority is the only housing authority in the state of North Carolina that has gone six months without reporting their data. We have recently received written complaints from landlords about not getting paid, that's been a new wrinkle. We hadn't, we hadn't had that before, now we have heard some of those, and I understand maybe some of those have been resolved. But that's the core of what they do, their Section 8 vouchers, I mean, people can get evicted if, if these landlords aren't getting their, their Section 8 vouchers. So that is, and I've seen emails where people were begging not to get--
And just to clarify, the tenants don't have any control or authority over that? They're evicted because of, they're evicted because of the, the lack of responsiveness or lack of getting paid from the public housing authority?
Yeah, the private landlords, I mean, they're for profit. That voucher is part of the rent. The tenant could pay their $200 or whatever it is, but if, if the landlord's not getting the other $800 through the Section 8 voucher, or the family, Section 8 voucher, then they can be evicted.
So you're helpless, basically?
Yeah.
And so in follow-up with that, then if they are not reporting their data, then they are not getting money from HUD to turn around and pay the landlords?
That's where all the bureaucracy of all this, that my understanding is, there's a reporting structure that you have to fulfill reporting on in order to get the money for the Section 8 vouchers. So I don't know the answer to why that hasn't been happening, but that, that will catch you up. So, so you asked the city attorney and I, so what are, what are the options? Given the complaints that have risen the last year or so, so there, there may be a couple, the, the two core options are, so as the mayor, as I said earlier, you can remove housing authority board members for cause, and it's a process, you can't just remove them, there's a process involved, and replace them, and that might get, get to the oversight, the North Carolina general statutes outline what, outlines what that process is. The second thing is, is city council can abolish the Hickory Public Housing Authority, you can do it via resolution, which is in your packet, and transfer their responsibilities to the Western Piedmont Council of Government, who already operates a regional housing authority for the Hickory Metro. Now, that requires final HUD approval, but if you, if you were eventually to approve the resolution, it would be effective July 1st, 2025, because there needs to be a transition period. And somebody asked me earlier, well, does that mean everybody that's on the Hickory Housing Authority's Section 8 vouchers has to start over again? No, that's not what that means. I say they're just, the administrator of the whole program would change, but they're, they would not be impacted negatively. HUD actually recommends regionalization, so you can imagine, they've got all the, you know, they, back in the day, before technology and whatnot, it was, you know, they had, a lot of towns had housing authorities, and it's a lot to make, because it, these were the organizations administering their grant programs. So they've had, through the years, they have started where possible, some folks aren't in a position to do it, but to consolidate public housing authorities through regional housing authorities, which is what we have. So if you were to approve this, the Hickory, Hickory is already part of the COGS Section 8 program. They're already placing people in Hickory. So there's, I actually call it some duplication. So, so that was, that was what was hap, would be happening here. And just, the COG didn't come to us asking to do this, we were asked to look into the, to the options, they said they are willing to do it, but, I mean, they didn't come to us begging, you know, for this. So the regionalization will address housing challenges and improve delivery of service to low-income families. The Western Piedmont Council of Governments has demonstrated an ability to effectively manage HUD's housing voucher program, as you just saw, by their almost 98% utili rate, utilization rate of the vouchers that HUD allocates to them. They've also demonstrated their ability to consolidate it, as they recently did with the Valdez Public Housing Authority. So they, they have done this before. And something that's a little bit unique with the COG, they can also provide additional services to their voucher recipients through their agency on aging divisions. If you've had elderly folks that are on Section 8, you have additional services there, and you have folks that are still working age, they have a workforce development division that can also work with their Section 8 recipients to get them up and out of the Section 8 program and, and independent for themselves.
I'm assuming that a lot of this is economies of scale, like any other business, correct?
It is.
That their benefit, you know, some of the performance is due to economies of scale and those types of things?
Yeah, that's absolutely true. I know the housing authority is, is a small authority, it's had some turnover, and the, as to your point, the COG has more resource, they're, they're involved in more activities, and they, they have more resources, not just because of HUD, but, you know, they provide services to other organizations, and so they just have some resources that, that just the housing authority is not able to have. I mean, in fairness, I mean, they just, the housing authority doesn't have the funding to do all of that.
And I do want to follow up there also, the, the Western Piedmont has oversight by four different county managers, the city managers, and they meet and get monthly reports all the time.
Yes, so the housing authority board for the Western Piedmont Council of Government Regional Housing Authority is the COG general board, who are elected officials from around the four county region. So it's a cross-section of, you know, of folks from city councils around the region. And again, everything, you could approve this resolution, and HUD could still disapprove it, although they're encouraging regionalization, I don't know that they would disapprove it, but it would, again, be effective July 1st, 2025. And you, this is hard to read, but every month, the Western Piedmont Council of Governments puts out of all their divisions, the number and statistics of what they saw that month, and so they are transparent about putting, to your point on the, you know, the level of resources that they have to be able to do this. So you know in each one of the half a dozen divisions that they have, what is going on every month, because they're putting this, you can go on their website and look at it. So they put that out every month. So here's, I think the last slide. So over the past two months, the city attorney made several public records requests to the Hickory Public Housing Authority, so we could fulfill your request to really understand more, you know, how are they functioning, how are they structured, what's, what are the ins and outs? And there have been a number of records that we have requested that we have, would have thought we would have received by now, that we have not received. So some of these go back weeks, so either, either they don't have what we're asking for, or some other, I don't know. So, so with that in mind, so we would like to have a more, at least give two more weeks to get a fuller, complete picture. I think we've got, I mean, I think we're about 95% of what we, but there are a couple of, there are a couple of pieces of information we would like to have to close some, some knowledge gaps between what we think we know and what we might not. So we would ask that, give two more weeks for an opportunity to get those last documents that we asked for, or just, we don't have them, that would be good too, we can quit waiting on them. So hold the public hearing tonight for the proposed resolution, close the, so hear from the public, they'll give you more information to make your decision, gives you more, two more weeks to think about what you hear tonight. Close the public hearing, and then make a motion and a second to delay the final vote until October 15th. Does that make, so, motion, because after you make the motion and the second, then you can have more discussion if you want more information, and then the ultimate, ultimate, you know, voting to delay the, the final vote until October 15th, which is your next meeting. Does that make sense?
And I would like to ask a question. With our city attorney, excuse me, we made several public, or several, several attempts for the public records from HPA. We received some documents, correct? And there are some documents that we have not yet received, such as minutes that we've been asking to receive from Hickory Public Housing Authority. So I guess a question would be, with those minutes, how far did we ask back for the minutes?
Yeah, so you are correct. We've made, I think it's three total public records requests. The first batch was rather large, and we did get some of that, but there was still some substance missing from the responses. A lot of the minutes requests weren't related to time, it wasn't like a five-year grab back, it was more related to events. Give us the minutes where you approved X, Y, or Z action. So I am working with the PHA's attorney, Charles Francis, who's out of Raleigh, and he is certainly working diligently, diligently trying to get these records to us, but we have a few gaps that we need to close.
Yes, because that's interesting to know, that whether they, it's either they don't have them, or either they don't want us to have them. So that's interesting to know, thank you.
I, I think, Mr. Swanson, my, my question is, is as a local government unit, recognized by North Carolina statutes, are they held to the same standard as, say, we are in terms of documentation of meetings, minutes, those types of things? Are they held to the same standard as a local government unit?
Yes, yes.
So that part of the bylaws of the Hickory Housing Authority is that they're to notice the city, and we have found they have not done that up until, I believe, July was the first actual notice that they gave, just like we have to notice every public meeting.
That's right. We, we did find in the public records request that they were deficient in that regard.
Thank you. And then once we, if we follow this process, then on October 15th, we will reopen?
It would be--
Like to republish it?
No, no, explain how that would--
Yes, so actually, you wouldn't have to republish or anything, re-advertise for the public hearing, you would not reopen the public hearing, you would reconvene, and then you would just take action on the 15th as to whatever you decided to do. It could be to abolish, it could be to increase the membership, it could be whatever you decide.
It'd probably be under a special report, just so I could, hey, we got this information or didn't, and now the, the question's before you for an up or down vote.
And when is the last request that you requested for the records, the minutes, excuse me?
Yeah, so probably about nine to 10 days ago would have been the last request.
And that's your third request?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that, is that the end of your presentation, sir? Are there any other questions for our city manager? From council? Thank you, sir. All right, once again, as in the previous public hearings, we will allow up to 15 minutes for anyone that would like to speak in opposition, and we will allow the same amount of time for anyone that would like to speak in favor. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. I do ask that you keep in mind that the 15 minutes for each side is, is to the entire group, so if someone has already spoke to something that you were going to say, you might take that into consideration as to not use up the entire 15 minutes with redundancy. Once again, I'll remind you that this is not a question and answer session, that it is your, your opportunity to share whatever you feel like that you would like for the council to hear related to this matter, and it will not be a debate. We will be respectful of each other, and we expect that to, to carry on throughout the meeting. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for the matter in consideration of the resolution to abolish the City of Hickory Public Housing Authority and to transfer it to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, as you've heard presented by our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood. And I'll ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this consideration. If you would please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. I am Trish Johnson, and I serve as a member of a commissioner with the public, the Hickory Public Housing Authority Board. Thank you for the opportunity to address. I cannot say, say that I am speaking in favor of or in opposition of, because I'm just hearing and hearing all the information from your perspective. But what I am speaking in favor of is to please let's take opportunity to get the information. Let's make sure that we don't mix apples with oranges, that we call it what it is. I can say that as a member of the board, and I have been on that board appointed in 20, since 2016, we do diligently have minutes, they are approved, and we are fulfilling our role as, in our responsibility as being a governing body of that organization. So I know that there are some concerns that have been expressed by, by tenants, we have those same concerns, because one of our main, main concerns, of course, is making sure that our residents have fair, affordable, safe housing. That's our main concern. And everything sometimes does not come off the way it should be. Having spent 39 years in education, I know that sometimes people will complain about things that aren't just the way they should be, but it is our responsibility to oversee the working of what's happening, and I know that there are some effective solutions. Maybe the solution may be to turn it over to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, but I think, I don't want our board to be viewed as one that is not doing its due diligence, because that's what I hear. When I hear you say that they're not keeping their minutes, they're not doing this, that is unfounded and untrue. I'm not sure why you haven't received the information that you have requested, but on my end, from where I sit, I have seen email after email after email with attachment after attachment that has been forwarded to Mr. Swanson in the request, in, in response to the request for information that has come directly from the Hickory Public Housing Authority. I found out last night that there was probably some information that's being requested from our attorney. I'm not aware of what he has sent or what he has not sent, but we are going to be meeting with him on the 3rd to get some further clarification for what he has not responded to. But I can say that every time we pull an employee to send five, six, seven emails each day in response to requested information, somebody is not doing the work on the other end. We do not have a staff that is full, I'm sure, as Western Piedmont Council of Governments, but we do have a staff that is committed and concerned. We are a group that has established accountability. I know how important it is. When I raise my hand to serve in a capacity, I take the responsibility, and I am accountable for what I am there to do. But I find it to be somewhat disheartening when I hear that we feel that it is felt that the board does not have the ability to oversee and to provide the oversight that is needed for the operations, the, the fair and safe operations of the public housing authority. I think our dialogue needs to be transparent, we need to call it what it is. If you think that we have exceeded our ability to manage in a capacity as a governing board, then that's what we need to call it. It's not because we're not doing what we need to do, when we don't have the finances, when we don't have the funding to complete and to repair things as they should be, we're working and making sure, it's not our responsibility to do the work. It's our responsibility to oversee, to hire the CEO, to hire, to make sure staff is hired and to set policies. We meet regularly, I invite any of you to attend our meetings, I invite you to be there to hear up close and personal what our discussions include. I invite you to pay attention to the policies that we are enforcing. I know that it started about mid-spring, and we began to have more and more reports of just dissatisfaction for things that were happening as far as the maintenance of our buildings and facilities. Those things are trying to be addressed as quickly as we can. It is not because the board is not paying attention, or is not capable of paying attention, it's because we have to make sure we have the infrastructure to do what we-- It's because we have to make sure we have the infrastructure to do what we need to do, to make sure that we have the resources to do what we need to do. We received a report which astonished most of us back in the summer, that there was a report of over 6,000 police reports made at the, addressed at Hickory Public Housing establishments or their facilities, our facilities. But when we sat with the police and we did what we should do as citizens and collaborate and communicate together, we found out that a lot of it was merely some pre-opportunities to do some things to prevent. They do ground, they do foot patrol. They're, they're just doing regular checking. So all of those go in as a report, and when you see it, yeah, you're going to see 6,000 reports, but you got to look and see how much is main, is requiring the safety of our students, of our, excuse me, of our citizens. I'm not saying that they're not problems. I'm not saying that. I'm not a Pollyanna, and I'm not, not trying to deny that anything, that there are not opportunities there for us to address. I'm just saying that collaboratively, as a citizen-concerned group, as a city council who has been appointed by your mayor, as a group who has appointed by your mayor to serve the citizens and the tenants of the Hickory Public Housing Authority, that you would give us an opportunity to answer those questions, to work together, because even if the decision is made, we don't want to go out, I don't want to go out saying that we were incapable, we were not qualified, we could not manage. That does not look good or bode well for us, especially for our community. I know that things have escalated over the past few months, and we're working as best as we can, but I would say I know that as commissioners who are appointed to this board, we have our hearts in the right places, and we're doing the right thing by our citizens, and we're taking our responsibility very, very seriously. So I would say that even though the vouchers are causing us concern right now, you know, I know the question isn't, no questions, but my statement is, how can Western Piedmont Council do any different? When we can't, when we have to make sure that the vouchers that are issued for the Hickory Public Housing Authority are within a certain radius, how are we going to do any different when the housing is not available or when that housing is substandard for what our citizens need? So we're just asking that if a decision is made, that there is a come-to-the-table conversation so that we're all on the same page, and if it's apples, let's call it apples. If you just want to move it, just move it. If it's oranges, then call it oranges, but let's not mix the two by making it appear to our citizens and to the citizens of Hickory that the board is not capable or competent to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and thank you for your volunteer service on the board. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in opposition? There doesn't appear to be anyone else that would like to speak in opposition. I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. We do have a sign-up sheet that was out there, and one person signed up to speak in favor. It's not necessary that you sign up to speak. It's just a, it's just cordial and it helps us out, but anyone can speak, either opposed or in favor. So at this time, I'll call upon Mr. Anthony Starr. He's the executive director of Western Piedmont Council of Government to speak in favor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, staff. Thank you for allowing us to join you this evening. So I just wanted to take a couple of moments and talk a little about the Western Piedmont Council of Governments for those that are not familiar with our organization. So we were created in 1968 by the local governments in Alexander, Burke, Caldwell, and Catawba Counties to provide services to local governments and to the public on behalf of our local governments. We consist of a team of 75 outstanding professionals, and we serve, as mentioned before, the 24 municipalities and four counties with a board that consists of elected officials from each local government and seven appointed persons. We also have an executive committee to handle specific areas for the board. We provide a range of housing services, including the regional housing authority that was mentioned. We also provide housing rehabilitation and repairs, down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. We fund affordable housing projects on a short, with short-term loans for tax credit projects that have been constructed here in the city. We also fund nonprofits to help build affordable housing projects. We also provide a number of other services, including senior adult services through our area agency on aging, workforce development, including oversight of the NC Works Career Centers to assist folks in finding jobs and obtaining training, community economic development that includes grant writing for projects exceeding several billion dollars in value. We also provide a range of community and regional planning services, including town planning, emergency management planning, transportation planning, research and data analytics, and a few other things. We are the largest public housing authority in the region, and we serve up to 1,537 families each month with 1,416 Section 8 vouchers, or housing choice vouchers, as they're also called, and 121 apartments that are publicly owned in Valdez. We lease, as we mentioned, about 98% of our vouchers, and that voucher distribution varies, but about 40-40% of those vouchers are in Catawba County, about 20% in Burke, 30% in Caldwell, 5% in Alexander. The availability of affordable multifamily housing units affects the distribution of the vouchers because it's up to each tenant, which community they use, they want to live. And we recently absorbed the Valdez Housing Authority at their request, and that transition has gone very smoothly with no problems for the tenants. We have a stable and experienced housing authority staff consisting of 14 great professionals, including Stephanie Hamby, who has served, served as the director since 2013. Stephanie's with me tonight. Oversight is provided by our elected officials, as mentioned, through the COG Policy Board, and we provide monthly data reports to the board and an executive committee to be transparent and accountable to our, to the public. As also mentioned, we follow the same financial and legal requirements for accountability that local governments must follow. We would say that merging housing authorities has been a suggested goal for a number of years as a strategy to maximize efficiencies, improve services, and provide housing mobility for tenants. Mobility increases opportunities for tenants to become self-sufficient. Of course, this is up to each community, such as the City of Hickory, and we defer to you because the council governments work for our local governments. In this case, the city has requested that the COG consider the transfer of the Hickory Housing Authority to our agency. Our board is, our board is poised to accept the transfer if approved by the city council. If the transfer occurs in July of 2025, the current Hickory Housing Authority staff can apply for new positions at the COG, and we would say that we will look at each, on a case-by-case basis. I would say generally, we're looking for people with integrity, a commitment to public service, and a strong work ethic. Our team will work hard to ensure that the transition goes very smooth if you approve it, and tenants should only expect positive changes and no interruptions in their services. And I think the transition with the Valdez Housing Authority proves that out. Landlords should also expect timely payments and good customer service from the COG. We have a staff person who works on recruiting new landlords. That's partly how we're successful in our higher lease rate that we have, that's above average. They work to recruit new landlords. We have a annual landlord information meeting where we require, we have dozens of prospective landlords come in, and we give them briefings and tell them how the program works and the benefits of the program, and let them know there are a lot of advantages for being a landlord with our program, and that's helped make us successful. It's not easy to find landlords, but it takes work, and we've been successful in that, and we're confident that we can do that in this case as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions as you go along in this process. We appreciate the support that you always give the council governments, and we defer to your judgment on what you do ultimately, but we're here to assist if you feel like that is the best course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starr. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard and speak in favor this evening? I'm not sure if they're wanting to speak or if they're leaving. Okay. Once again, I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Rivanda Lynch, and I thank the city council and mayor guests for this opportunity. I have lived in Ridgeview all my life, born and raised, my entire family. My mom, my brothers, everyone went to Ridgeview with pride. I was the last one of the sixth graders that came out of Ridgeview before they closed My community is built on residential homes before there was even a project considered. They placed those projects down in between homes, residential homes, that were bought, built by our parents, our grandparents. We all pretty much still remain there, me and my mom, next door, Janice, top Janice Johnson and her husband. Her parents built and owned that home. They're beautiful homes. They're older homes, but we maintain them. We keep our grass cut, our flowers planted. We take pride. Up the street is Taff Broome. He was a principal of Ridgeview. Across the street is Ms. Thompson's home. She was also an educator. You come on around the street, Ms. Crutchfield, her son, Harlan, he maintains a beautiful brick home. All up through our community, up and down the street, are residential homes. Nobody was asked if we wanted projects put into our community. These projects have been there for over 50 mi, 50 years. I remember as a little girl, there were only houses there. Some of them were old, and in the beginning, it served, those projects did serve their purpose. And I know plenty of people who lived there, grew, went on, got educated, and got their own homes. But what's going on here now, it's entirely different. It should not be. It's like people are speaking for us. Our community has been trashed. We have drugs, drug traffic coming from a blue hotel, what they call a hotel, off of 70, every day. That's why I filed a complaint. Me and my mom's home, next door to the left, it's only like three or five feet, if that much, away from a housing project. We can't even get up in peace to look out the window because of housing projects, drug addicts, drunks. And I don't mean that to put anybody down, but it's the honest-to-God truth. We have grown men on the side of our homes, urinating. I got pictures to prove it, if anybody wants to see it, because I'm sick of it. We should not be enduring this. The walkway, the historic walkway that was built, if you look at where it stops right there at Ridgeview, and on over to that blue hotel that's harboring prostitutes, oh, yes. It's obvious. It's in plain sight, drug addicts, because these people are coming across Highway 70 into our, into our neighborhoods, leaving grocery buggies. We can't even keep our community clean. These projects are not even being maintained. It's serving no purpose for anyone. I've witnessed drug overdoses. Two or three times a week, there were ambulances being called. I had no idea, but I found out why, because people were overdosing. Just about three weeks ago, next door, my mom gets up, makes her morning coffee, looks out the window, and was startled by a body being carried out on a gurney. We've never experienced anything like this. We did not grow up like this. We did not grow up like this. These people have been put into our community, and I don't mean that, again, in disregard to any human being, because we all deserve a right to have housing, but this is not the right way. Right, I travel as a healthcare professional, and a few of my patients are within group homes. I compare right now what's going on in these projects in the Ridgeview community. They're unsupervised group homes. That's how I see them. These people are just, I mean, it's like, some of them are unstable. You can see it. It's obvious, and probably self-medicating with drugs and alcohol, but you cannot make that our responsibility any longer. Let us have our homes. I've asked them to be removed. I have asked them to be removed. We want homes, just like everybody else in our community. We want plants. We want trees. I want to be able to get up in the morning with my mom and feel good about what I look at when I look on the outside of our window in the morning. This should not be. It should not be a question over if they are handling their affairs right, because it's obvious they're not. As I continue to do my research and further my complaint, I did found out, find out about new dimensions. And what I find out, found out, I have no words for it, because the same, same person that I had no knowledge of was the director of the public housing. There are documents, news investigative news reporting articles dated back to 2011 for the mishandling of funds, approximately 600,000. We shouldn't even be questioning this anymore. Here we are, a decade, 13 years later, same old issues, and it has gotten worse. Our community has, have been trashed. These apartments are being used for drug use and the sale of drug use. People can come through the community and tell you who's selling and where they live. It needs to stop. I've called the police, and they have responded, and their response is, there is nothing we can do. And it's obvious, but something needs to be done, and the done is get rid of this. Unfortunately, people may be misplaced, but you cannot keep continuing us to be responsible. This is not our responsibility. We pay taxes, just like everybody else. And again, our homes are beautiful, but our community is being trashed. It is being trashed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. Is there any, no. Okay. I didn't say it, but we don't allow any outburst of any kind, whether it's clapping or cheering or jeering for either side, so please respect that as well. I'll ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak in favor.
Good evening, mayor, guests, city council members, Mr. Wood, and attorney, city attorney. I am, my name is Ida Klow. I live at 1215 10th Street Boulevard Northwest in Hickory, and I am also president of the Hickory NAACP. And I am here because the NAACP has received over a period of several years complaints about the housing. Some of them have, the complaints have to do with maintenance, some of them have to do with how tenants or tenant, their guests may be behaving or misbehaving in the, on the properties. And I too have heard that the police can't do much. I've also heard that the council, excuse me, is limited because of the relationship between the city and the authority, the housing authority, and the new dimensions. I, I think the bottom line as far as the NAACP is concerned, and we have heard many of the issues, many of the things that have already been expressed, so I don't need to go through those, but because of all of those things that we've heard, we think that it is important for all those powers that be make an effort to resolve this issue to the benefit of tenants. We don't live there, I don't live there, and nobody on, in the NAACP has expressed to me their direct concerns. We get information from other people coming to us, so we want to see. And I, I do want to commend you for the fact that there is going to be a two-week period, that there's not going to be a snap decision made tonight. But I think if... But I think if you have heard from tenants, and I hope if there are any here who have not expressed your concerns, that you do so. We need to know from the tenants. We need to know, we need more transparency. There's a lot that we don't know, and someone spoke to me earlier and said something about the situation being murky. And I think that's how it is, that's the right word to express how things are. So I appeal to the, um, all of you to make, attempt to make decisions that are going to be for the benefit of the tenants, not for hired staff, not for directors, or managers, or overseers, not even for the city. Because if the things, that, if everything is done to benefit the tenants, possibly we won't have some of the concerns that have been, have been expressed about neighboring communities. So thank you for having this hearing. Please consider the concerns and needs of the citizens, not only of Hickory, but of the tenants who live in the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clow. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor? Before you, before you begin, what's our time? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow a five-minute continuance for those who are remaining that would like to speak.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, please start the clock at five minutes.
Section eight, hard thing. Section eight is not something that you're supposed to live off of. It is a temporary thing.
Daria, you need to introduce yourself and give your address.
I'm Daria Jackson, address 133 Seventeenth Street, Southeast, Farm and Bee, Hickory, North Carolina. Section eight is supposed to be in something that just helps someone. You've got people living in the same apartments, I mean, for generations, where they're talking about trying to get them off of it. As long as the people that have it now are still getting their checks, they're not going to try to get them out, as long as they're getting the money. I know people that went to high school with me that still live there, and their parents lived there before then. There need to be a more of a structure for it to be temporary. It's not something you're supposed to live off of, is all I'm saying.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in reference to something that hasn't already been spoken to? Ms. Pope? Please state your name and your address.
Margaret Pope. I reside at 129 Third Avenue Southwest. Rivanda Lynch spoke. She lives around, she's on Second Street, near Eighth Avenue Drive and Ninth Avenue. I'm Third Avenue, right at First Street, two blocks over from Sunny Valley. My concern is not so much the financing as management. There are problems there that need to be addressed. I want the people at Sunny Valley to be able to live there in peace, but I also want the rest of the community to be able to live in peace. We have those nice Habitat Homes, new families to the community who cannot live comfortably and without fear because of some of the things that are happening at Sunny Valley. I know that there are people at Sunny Valley who, you know, are fine people, but there are other people coming in causing problems. I have heard, for example, that there is an apartment there, the person that the apartment was rented to does not live there, somebody else is there. I'm just very concerned about management. Who's going to manage the apartments to make sure that there are not problems in the community? So that's what I would like to see. My question is, if Western Piedmont Council of Governments manages the funds, what's New Dimension going to do? They own the properties? I mean, I'm not really sure. I don't understand the relationship between New Dimensions and the Housing Authority. I don't know whether there's a conflict of interest there. But maintenance, management, management, that's my concern, management. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? One more time, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I'll ask if there was anyone that spoke or would like to speak in opposition that would like to any rebuttal. We have, we have five minutes available for rebuttal if necessary, so I'll open it up for anyone that would like to speak and rebuttal to what you've heard in opposition. All right, there being no one else desiring to speak, excuse me, sir, go ahead, come on.
I think my colleagues have already spoken, and I'm finna go to a revival.
Your, your name and address for the record, I know you, but make it official.
I'm finna give it to you now, Reverend David E. Roberts II, Pastor Morning Star First Baptist Church here in Hickory, member of the Housing Board, executive member of the NAACP, and I gonna go to other thirty-four things that I'm involved with in this city. Uh, Mayor Guess, councilmen and women, city manager, I greet you guys. And I said I wasn't gonna say nothing, but listening to everybody talk, I have to say something. My church is right here, near everything that they're talking about. I'm right here in the center of what's going on. Lot of these tenants come to my church every day for money, for rent, light, water, whatever. They come to my church for that. And I don't care, it'd just be one less board I had to be on. It wouldn't bother me a bit. But my concern is the citizens. And I heard my sister, Friendship and Morning Star are the only two churches on inner faith housing. And so we provide ten thousand dollars upfront money for people to get houses. That's the inner faith, that's what we do, Morning Star and Friendship. And so I believe in the American dream, I'm also retired Navy, did twenty years in the United States Navy, fought for this great nation. I didn't fight just for this side or that side, white or black, I fought for all Americans, I'm an American citizen. And in that, what I found is that it'd be nice to build all these houses, but a lot of our tenants that are in the projects can't afford them. I was born and raised in the projects too, in Asheville, North Carolina. I came out the projects, so the projects is not a bad thing. I get a funny feeling when people talk about the project, because I'm a product of the projects. We got just as many good people, fine people, that come out the projects. There are some issues over there, my church is right there, matter of fact, Ms. Pope is right behind my church. So my church is right there in the middle of it, I see it every day, all day. What I'm trying to say is that I'm also seeing outside people who got money buying dilapidated houses that some of these families she talked about have left vacant, barren. And they're buying them for eight, nine thousand, and then they're selling them for a hundred thousand. And the people that she talked about that was born and raised that now can't afford to live in their own community. I also see, I, I say I'm a veteran, so I deal with the veterans helping veterans, we got the largest homeless veteran community in the state of North Carolina. We got a lot of people that need housing, but they can't pay a thousand, two thousand, three hundred dollars a month. The people that stay in housing really only paying about between four or six hundred a month based on their salary. That's the only place that they're gonna be able to live. Nobody, nobody else, but people come by my church every day to get a bag of groceries, because they don't have no money for food, and they don't have nowhere else to go. We have some vouchers, and we got some houses around here that they can't afford. Matter of fact, I, I rent a couple houses myself, my church got a couple of houses. And we had to lower the, the rents that are raising the rent, so the tenants that are in there can stay in there. And I don't really care whether you go with us, or whether you go with them, as long as you remember every citizen in this state, in this city. Every citizen in this city deserved the right to have a home. Every citizen in this city deserved the rights, as Sister Pope said, to live in peace. I'm on Habitat Board too, and we are building some houses all around with Habitat to try to help the people live peacefully and in harmony one with another. Some of this crime, the mayor was there, they had a meeting in my church, and the police came and gave a thorough report of what's going on and how they manage that. Some of the crime is not really in houses, it's in that community, but it's not really in houses. Some of it's around the street from my church, and all of those are houses. Those are not projects, those are houses, and some of the crime is right there. So all I ask is that you receive a thorough report, that you get a complete report, that you get an honest report before you make your decision. Because I could care less, again, and I'm not racial, I'm not about black or white, I'm about humanity. And those people that live in houses, the majority of them can't go nowhere else. You do have that one little element, it's about like me being a black man in America. According to the media, I'm a rapist, I'm a murderer, I'm a gang member, and you can shoot me in the back and want nobody to say nothing. But if I go in the refrigerator and take that dog food out, they gonna have a fit. So you're talking to somebody who understands the plight of what's happening in the projects, as we call them. I don't know this new lawyer, I don't know what his motive is, I don't know who done got in his head and said some stuff, but I say, fine, do your research for yourself and find out what's really going on with the people who live there, who deserve the right to live as an American citizen. I don't care what Trump say, I'm not going back. I'm gonna be in jail, telling y'all that right now. And I'm standing here on behalf of the people who live over there, who come to my office every day, Reverend Roberts this, Reverend Roberts that. To my fellow citizens, they did all this talking up here, I've also found out that most of them in Hickory are related, they're all related. So then you know your cousin, you know your nephew, you know your whoever that's doing all the crime, turn them in, stop blaming it on housing. Don't let Pookie and Bebe get away with it, because you scared of snitches getting stitches. So we gonna come up here and talk, we ought to be honest about everything and be real. That's the type of person that I am. You don't know me, but the rest of them do. That's my time.
Yes. Thank you, Reverend Roberts. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion that we delay the final vote related to the consideration of a resolution to abolish the Hickory City Housing, Public Housing Authority and transfer it to the Western Piedmont Council of Governments for a vote until October the fifteenth.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion?
Well, let me go ahead and start this off, just to let the reason why we're here today. Back in June, I made a public statement here at City Council, and none of these City Council members knew exactly on that moment, at that moment, that I was gonna say what I said. What brought me here, and what brought all of us here, was all of the complaints, all of the things that were not being done on behalf of Hickory Public Housing. Then we started looking into it. I personally was on the phone with HUD. After speaking with HUD, I got off the phone, I told the mayor, the city manager, and other city staff, that this structure with the Hickory Public Housing Authority and New Dimension is absolutely not acceptable. And if we continue in the same rate that we're going, I call that insanity. Now, I enjoyed this process because it kind of brought me back, you know, undergrad degrees in criminal justice, on the path, you know, wanting to be a lawyer, so wanted to do, you know, my own kind of research on a couple of things. First of all, let me say to the board, to the Hickory Public Housing Authority Board, I say thank you, because you don't get paid for what you do, it's volunteer work, it shows your passion. I appreciate that, and I think those of us in the community appreciate that. But it also shows that there's a part of the board that knows stuff, and the other part may not know stuff, because it was stated that now this new information is coming up, which the pony I'll ride now, which is on the high note, but believe me, I'll get down to the dirt. The high note is, how is it that the sole purpose of the Hickory Public Housing Authority is to provide adequate low-income housing, and yet and still at sixty percent? That should be a part of the agenda of the board meeting every month, because that's your sole purpose. So does the whole board knows what's going on? Absolutely not. And when we go another two weeks and come back, you know what, we keep on digging, you know what, we keep on finding dirt. So it's orange. Who's HUD? The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. What is HUD's purpose? Provides funds for the provision of affordable housing through its public housing programs. Talk about HUD, you know, in other words, let me put it in its simplest form, HUD is basically who you answer to. HUD is basically your overseer. HUD is basically, in its simplest form, who you supposed to answer to. That's HUD, right? But let me continue. The City of Hickory Public Housing Authority was created to administer the said funds and manage all associated assets with the public housing program. HUD gives HUD, Hickory Public Housing, the money. Hickory Public Housing is supposed to efficiently administer the funds, so that people can have a place to stay. But still sixty percent. I don't know what planet I am, and this is not about black or white, this is about principle and moral. I'm trying to figure out what planet I live on, that if I own a business and I give somebody an assignment and they don't fulfill the assignment, I've gotta be cuckoo to allow them to continue on in the same assignment if the work is not being done. So when I say this, yes, the city has grown exponentially beyond leaps and bounds, and housing is certainly what I call growing pains. And so when I say absolutely, the Hickory Public Housing Authority, listen, the growth here in Hickory has outgrown. I wanted to stay on that note, but let me continue. HUD, once again, you answer to, oversight of what you're supposed to be doing. HUD encouraged the consolidation of public housing authorities to provide better economic and housing mobility for program clients. The Western Piedmont Council of Government has been designated as a regional public housing authority since January first, nineteen seventy-eight, I was two years old. Pursuant and one hundred and fifty-seven dash four. One A authorizes the City of Hickory to delegate by resolution any powers to the Western Piedmont Council of Government, including the transfer of its public housing authority. If it's your supervisor saying you need to transfer the vouchers, and these are the people you answer to, if they recommending and they encouraged, and if it was my commentary, I basically say, they're just basically saying, we would like for you to do this. they're just basically saying, we would like for you to do this. Okay. None of these city council members knew what I was doing, because I said in June, I'm my own person. And I don't like when I have these types of convictions. I'm like a turtle, everybody knows me. I'm like calm, collective. But when God gives me a conviction, my own family doesn't like me, so it's okay. So, we've been requesting for minutes. Then a board member just comes up and says, well, I didn't know that we were requesting for all the minutes and why you don't have them. Want to know why? Because some of the board knows, some of the board doesn't. But it was stated that back in June, that when the Hickory Public Housing Authority met, back in June, they approved the minutes for September. Let me see if my brain can put this together. October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May. Eight months. I'm thinking the way that I run my church, if I have a meeting, my minutes is supposed to be, what? Approved the consecutive month. If I had a meeting in September, then it should have been approved in October. That means, was the board engaging on anything for those eight months? You got records saying otherwise, next meeting I'll apologize. Can I continue? I will. Don't worry, I know some of you might be nervous, but trust me, I'll go back in my shell.
We're for it, go ahead.
You don't have time on this, sir.
Thank you. This is not a black and white issue. This is about what's right. And I wouldn't be here today if things were operating the way that it's supposed to be operated. Now, it was mentioned that back in 2012, let me give the exact, round about, $522,000 that was already HUD found out that Hickory Public Housing misappropriated those funds. And I'm not bringing up the past, but I'm just gonna show you something, which lets you guys know that I'm wily for my community. But I also gonna encourage my community to walk in excellence. And we're not gonna play the race card for us to continue on the way that we're continuing. All I'm saying is, as a leader, and I'm the only black person up here, is for us to understand that we can do better. So back in 2012, $522,000, let me just make a magnifying glass on it. That's over a half a million dollars, misappropriated by Hickory Public Housing. However, that structure continue on, beside, I don't even know. But, do you know? Let's deal with today. I'm not gonna call any names, I'm not even gonna tell you the name of the position. I'll just give you the description of the position. This work involves responsibility for planning, developing, implementing, maintaining, evaluating, and overseeing programs designed to increase the economic self-sufficiency of low-income families and thereby reduce their need for subsidized programs and services. Operative word, economics. Even right now, one of your staff members, which I did not know about until I started investigating, and then I found out after I've been getting all the complaints, even now, a person on your staff has been brought up with felony charges indicted. There's a difference. Indictment is not the same as conviction. Indictment means where there's smoke, there's fire. I'm telling y'all, when I got convictions, I'm not to be messed with. Charged of felony obtaining property now, I'm talking about it now, property by false pretense for over $22,000, and the next court date is October 21st. Right back where we started from. And you think that I should say we need to continue because of color? No, what I'm saying, we can rise up above this, and the purpose of Hickory Public Housing is to give housing to people, and there's 200-plus families who can't find housing because we're not really providing for it. So you talk about veterans, there's veterans out there that needs housing. But what I'm gonna do, put the board back in place so that there's another 200 people who can't get vouchers. I'm sorry, I'm done.
No, don't apologize, don't apologize at all.
Okay, I'd like, thank you. Everything you have said is correct, and to follow up, I found out this afternoon, I went to the board meeting yesterday, and it was stated that the vouchers for HOPA, which is related to AIDS, was no longer going to be available. And it was referenced that it was due to COVID. Found out today that that's not true, that it was, in fact, they canceled their contract with the Hickory Housing and have moved it to the Western Piedmont because of lack of taking care of the vouchers. That's six of them. They're also losing a $73,000 grant for the family's self-sufficiency because they only served three people last year. The Western Piedmont served 53. And in the three years of 2020, '21, and '22, Western Piedmont served over 61. So there is a huge disparity in what the Western Piedmont Council of Government has the staff and the commitment and professionalism to administer housing for the 200 families that have been left without, and it is not fair. But I do want to address Mrs. Lynch, because this is only to do with vouchers, the property owner, New Dimensions, will have to be dealt with in a separate manner. That would be code enforcement, that I will, in collection with all of us, ask that code enforcement bear down and take care of the issues, and also the police to address that. But it will be the New Dimensions Board that will have to take care of the bricks and mortar units. We don't own it, it would be just like an apartment complex that's next to you. All you can do is complain to the administrator and then turn them into code enforcement and get the police involved. We will take care of, I'm committed to taking care of this voucher system and what has been going on. We cannot take care of New Dimensions. That will be for your, everyone collectively, to hold them accountable. And if you need the board members, we are more than happy to give you all of their email addresses, every member, so that you can contact them until they take care of it. That's my say.
I.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think this was a good opportunity for everybody to come together. There were things we didn't hear from the community that we were unaware of, I think, in terms of, not so much what's happening, but the sentiment, feeling, fears, just really your commitment to wanting to better what's out there and for everybody. So I guess I support what's been said. We talked about apples and oranges. The apples, the part that we do have jurisdiction over, seems to be almost, well, it is a no-brainer. If we're really all on the same page to serve as many families and people to provide housing, we need to make sure that we utilize all of those vouchers and get people in safe homes. There's a track record to do that, we have jurisdiction over that, that seems to be the best way to serve the most people. The second part, I think, was important to hear about what's actually happening in the bricks and mortar housing. We don't have, as Jill says, or Alderwoman Patton, jurisdiction over that, but we do know who owns it and a process where whatever we have jurisdiction over, we can intervene. So I think this has been very helpful for us to kind of discern what we can do and what the concerns are, and really open it up to what we can, where we can make the most impact to really serve everybody and provide that housing.
You know, there were several comments, you know, be concerned about the tenants, the humanity of it, and that has been everybody's focus throughout this process. I've learned more about public housing than I ever thought I would know, digging into this. I think it is convoluted, sometimes unnecessarily so, I think, which gives me concern between the relationship between New Dimensions and Hickory Public Housing. There is concern there because I think it's unduly, unnecessarily convoluted. The one thing that seems to be, the one common thing seems to be management between these two organizations. And, you know, I'm a business person, and, you know, poor management has consequences. And unfortunately, the tenants and the landlords are suffering from poor management here. You know, when landlords can't get paid, you know, they have to pay their mortgages. And when they can't get paid, the quality of landlords goes down, the quality of service goes down, and the tenants are the ones that are suffering. So first and foremost, we have to make sure that the landlords are getting paid so that they are in a position to provide the service for the tenants and attract other tenants to fill the 200 empty ones, vouchers that are not being used. What's happening is inexcusable. Anthony, you know, I'll admit it, when this first came before us, I was concerned about overreach of the board. I didn't want to be, you know, I did not want to overreach on a board that was in place. But the more we dug into this, the more it became obvious that we have to do something. And I was initially wrong, I judged it wrong, I'll admit that. And I might not share your passion or express it like you do, but I am passionate about this, and I do have conviction for making this right. It's inexcusable, it's unconscionable what is going on here. So that's all I have to say.
I'd just like to say that everyone deserves a safe, nice place to live. You shouldn't be afraid to live in your home. And nowadays, with things the way they are, it's almost get to where it's that we all are worried about that. But when you concentrate it all, put it all in one neighborhood, it's not a recipe for success. So I just want everyone to live as safely as possible. And I want to make sure that what we do will help the most people live safely in their home, wherever that might be. So we've got to decide. And we've got, the only thing we have to look at are the numbers of what's been going on from all this information that have been forwarded to us to help us make this decision.
And to follow up on that, Councilman Seaver, I think the information that's not coming to us, that's been requested, is also an important element of all this too. You know, I mean, they're like Attorney Swanson said, they are held to the same standards in terms of reporting and, you know, record-keeping as we are. And I don't understand the delays, you know, I haven't had it explained to me. But, you know, my phone's on and I'm ready, you know, we're ready for an explanation why we can't get what we're requesting.
I'll follow up on that, is that if minutes are available, we would like them, and if board members have them, go ahead and send them. We would love it because we can't seem to get it from the attorney.
And I like to let the board members know, listen, it's a few, I'm not saying all. But I do know one thing, bad company corrupts good character. Want to go against that, that's scripture. Keep on hanging out with bad company, it can corrupt your character as well.
Well, and I think we need to take care of the 216 families that are out there that have not gotten housing. And I think it's a shame, so I think we can, we need to change.
I'd like, just one last, so I've seen city council after city council after city council not address anything related to public housing, and there's been some issues there. And other city councils, and that's not a criticism, they either had other priorities or just didn't have the willpower to do what they needed to do. So y'all have, and we've, you know, there'll be an opportunity in the next two weeks, if something we put up there is wrong, we'd like to know about it. But we pulled the curtain back on what we've seen, and it's, public housing is a challenging, you know, part of local government, because it is, it is a, just by nature, it's one of the hardest parts of government you can deal with, you've got that. And then you've got a system in place that has not been efficient, and we've been making board appointments. It's almost been like Mission Impossible. So it's not necessarily all the board members, it's, they've been put in a tough situation with limited resources and expecting to perform at a certain level, so it's, you know, the board members are volunteer, they don't get paid, they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart, so it's the system and some of the, what's been going on that has been, you know, what we've been seeing in the results, so.
Well, I want to be careful to follow my own rules and not repeat what's been said. But I do want to, as your elected mayor and as an elected council, I do want to say that everyone on this council and everyone on the staff is deeply concerned and passionate about serving all of our citizens. As we all know, housing across the board, not just public housing, but housing is a high priority and a terrific concern, not just in the city of Hickory, but in all of our cities and municipalities. I also want to say that I appreciate and commend each and every one of you. I believe that everyone here has a passion for what is being discussed and that you are the active and engaged citizens because you're here and you care about this community. And we appreciate that tremendously. I know it's already been said, but I want you to hear it from me because I appoint the board members. I greatly appreciate the service of the board members who volunteer their time and do the best job that they possibly can with the limited resources that they have had. They, none of them get paid, and I have appointed each and every one of them, and I do appreciate their service to this community. I think that, I think that, as already has been said, that it is time for us to look at other options, and we're certainly doing that. And the last thing I'll say is this, we wanted to hear from the public. We could have very easily decided this matter on our own, and we all were in agreement that although we had the authority and the power to do that, that it wouldn't, that it wouldn't be the right thing to do. And I know everybody up here, just because we have the power and authority to do something doesn't mean that that's the direction we ought to take and we want to do what the right thing is. So I commend my fellow council members and our staff for that effort. And we've heard you tonight. We do not have all the information that we need, although we have a lot of information, and you've heard a lot of it tonight. So I don't feel like we have, we still need to gather some more information. And this two-week period should give us an opportunity to be able to do that. So we have a motion and we have a second on the table to continue this meeting until October the 5th for a vote. So at this time, October 15th, that's correct. So at this time, I'm gonna ask all those in favor to please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that vote carries unanimously. All right, next item on our agenda is departmental reports. I'll ask if there's any members of the council that would like to make any appointments to any of our boards or commissions.
Yes, I do have two. I'd like to nominate Angela Harris, then, as an African-American representative on the Community Relations Council. And finally found someone to fulfill. I'd like to nominate Lauren Jordan to the Recycling Advisory Board.
Okay, we have two, are there any others?
No.
All right. All right.
I move we approve the nomination.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries unanimously. Are there any matters not on the agenda, sir?
No, sir.
All right. General comments? I have just one, or two, actually. Once again, I want to congratulate one of our assistant city managers, Ms. Yade Fox, for her receiving the award from Central Latino for Outstanding Latino of the Year for Catawba County. She does a wealth of things in our community, and she is, I can tell you this, this council depends on her greatly. There's probably not a day that goes by that someone from this council or many of us from this council don't lean on her for various things. And we understand how it is that not only that she was nominated for this award, but how it is that she ultimately received this reward, award, because we see all that she does each and every day, and it is certainly to be commended. So once again, we want to recognize her and thank her for that. Secondly, and I probably will get in trouble, and I know he doesn't want me to say anything about this, but our city manager and all of our staff, our city manager's birthday was yesterday, and he, and bless his heart.
Best birthday ever.
Bless his heart. He has, he has been absolutely bombarded. I don't have to tell this audience all that's going on in our community, and in addition to that, of course, the storm and dealing with all the effects of that, not just in the City of Hickory, but working with other municipalities, actually probably working with other municipalities, has been a greater chore than dealing with the Hickory stuff because we were so fortunate and blessed that we didn't have a lot of the destruction that other municipalities had. But on his birthday, I doubt that he celebrated much of any at all. So obviously, we do want to recognize that and thank him for all that he does, and I don't know, I don't know if you had a happy birthday or not, but...
I asked my mom if she was sure I was born on the 30th because I'd like a do-over.
How many years is this?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
I look great for 75, though.
Yeah, yeah. But...
It's the new 48.
I'm not, I'm not going to suggest that we sing "Happy Birthday," but...
We're ready to go home.
Yeah, but, but we do want to thank him and wish him a belated happy birthday, and we appreciate him very much. All right.
Happy birthday.
We can clap for that.
I have a comment. I want, in light of the storm, I want to commend our fire, our police, our public services. We had an electrical fire right around the corner and, oh gosh, now Graham Triplet, Engine 13, they literally were there waiting all night for Duke Power. We saw them that evening, got up the next morning, had my coffee, they were still up there waiting for them, and the police have done an outstanding job. Public services, it was amazing, the very next day, they were out there cutting trees at the city parks and taking care of things, and they do a phenomenal job, and we appreciate it.
Just kind of a public service announcement. I know there are a lot of people, I've been contacted by people wanting to know how they can help the people in the western North Carolina counties with, you know, food, money, whatever. You know, back to the topic of efficiencies, there are charitable organizations that are in place that can leverage donations money, whether it's food, clothing money, whatever. They can leverage that and get it to these people quicker, better, more efficiently. So I encourage everybody to, you know, if you want to help, you know, Contact Samaritan's Purse is a good example. I'm not advocating any one of them, but, you know, contact an established charity that has the efficiencies to do that well. It helps them, it helps the people in western North Carolina because you're not on the roads, you know, interfering with emergency services, those types of things. And I would politely ask the media, the HDR, if they could put something in the paper along those lines, maybe talking about some established charities that can be contacted for our citizens who want to donate.
I think locally, we've been asked to funnel all of this through the United Way, the Catawba County United Way.
Red Cross.
And they're working in conjunction with the Red Cross. So that way, it's easier to disperse, they have the resources to get it out, so.
All right. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, thank you to all the folks that worked during the storm. I sent an email out, staff, tell them, everybody, the whole, they'll be proud. I mean, just coming to work those couple of days was something y'all be proud of, let alone the work that was done out in the field during the worst of it. So Steve said there are, there were 88 trees down in roadways. We've got 68 cleared so far. The 20 that are left have Duke Power lines wrapped up in them. We can't touch them until Duke, so they're getting there. I still don't have power. Congratulations, I'm so happy you got yours on.
I don't have power. I need power. I don't.
So anyway, Steve and his guys and the rest of the police, fire, airport, everybody else, water sewer folks, great job.
All right. Anybody else? Anything on your mind? All right. I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for being here this evening.